Let that be known, Ray Bortman called and I could not be happier. Oh, also, at some point, the city attorney's office will be presenting you with a resolution in support of a letter to the governor from Netflix. Netflix is saying they have a tremendous interest in wanting to come to Virginia. However, they do not, they gave comparisons of the way other states deal with films and so forth, and that Virginia is really not competitive as far as that, and explained that in the governor's letter from Netflix. And as such, I have had a resolution drawn up saying we support any effort that could help make this come to the Commonwealth. I think Virginia would be a huge benefactor of that. This is something that I believe Pharrell Williams has arranged for them to show interest in the Commonwealth. And that being said, if it's a very blah resolution, that would be a unanimous type thing, I would suggest we might do an add-on. But if not, I'm happy to, at your next meeting, but I would ask if we get it in a few minutes, that we look at it and never one find it acceptable, we would do it as an add-on. The first thing is short-term rentals, and I would just sit back and say to you, Mr. Jones and I had a meeting this past week, and just, you've got something, I see, John, you've got something out here, and we've got the, wait a minute. Okay, this is Jones and Sessom's thing, but anyway, some of the issues raised from our last meeting were signs. And we went to a four-by-four sign, which evidently accommodates everybody in the business, and basically some of the signs were already that size. The one-week, two-week was a big issue. If you recall, we heard that from the condominiums. And what is the term we're going to use, Mark? Not condominiums, but...
Single-family structures would be limited to one contract per week. Multi-family structures would be limited to two contracts per week.
And that covers your condominiums. So, and again, please understand, this is what we're suggesting. We've got more workshops on this, but we want to start addressing some of these other issues that have been brought up.
Four square foot.
Oh, four square foot. Oh, I think I said four by four.
Excuse, go ahead.
I'm sorry, because I don't know if these came before today. Did we get these before today?
I don't have...
So, I didn't see them or didn't read them. I'm just trying to figure out what the differences are between yours and yours.
The only difference of mine, as I mentioned when we met, was he had conditional use permit for single-family, R-10, R-40, those things. My proposal doesn't include conditional use permits. There's no CUP.
Right. And you've even suggested we divide up the vote some way, so you could vote for most of it, if I recall.
Well, two different, first of all, I asked, what's the difference from that? Is one, first thing is, I wouldn't have conditional use permit. You'd have to have a overlay district, not for the R-5, not the, it's already his thing overlay, but for the R-10, R-20, R-30, R-40, articles, you'd have to get an overlay district. Wouldn't be a conditional use permit. And I did ask that the rules and regulations that govern short-term rentals, no matter how they're allowed, be separate vote from where they're allowed to be. So, it wouldn't be in the zoning code, it would be in ordinance of what the rules and regulations were, so that someone might not agree with what we're doing on the, where to allow them, but would agree with the rules and regulations that would apply to them where they were allowed. That was what I was trying to get at.
Well, has anybody put forth that they are already in existence to be grandfathered in, or...
Referring to what?
The conditional use permit. If they're already in the system, they're already doing it.
Mr. Jones does not do that, if I recall.
No, definitely.
So, if you're already doing it, you still have to go back and do the conditional use?
Right, in certain areas of the city, yes. But the North End would not be one of them. Sandbridge would not be one of them.
Shore Drive?
Yeah, but again, there's something to be talked about.
There were certain zoning categories. It was zoning categories.
More zoning categories.
Elaborate on that, Mr. City Attorney.
This is confusing.
First of all, let me say that there is a typographical error in your version. It does say four by four. It should say four square feet, I believe. That's different.
Okay, thank you very much.
That would be, that would be sixteen square feet. That's not what I think we had in mind. That's a, that's an error on my part, and I, I say that and then follow it up with this. We have been asked by various council members to provide drafts, and we have attempted to capture their intent, but we're passing these around for the entire body without having the sponsors necessarily having reviewed them. So, it's possible that there may be other drafting issues as you go through them. But if it would be helpful to you, I will try to tell you what I understand to be the distinctions between all the different alternatives that are being passed around.
That's very good, but two more things before we do that.
Okay.
First of all, we're probably going to be advised by the city attorney that this should go to planning, back to planning commission.
Yes, sir. That is going to be part of my comment.
I don't, I don't want anyone to be caught off-guard, and it's his advice, not our desire per se, and if we want to talk about it further in closed session, we can do that. Is that correct?
That's right. We will have it listed on closed session, in case you wish to discuss that further in the basis for that advice, but...
And then the other thing is, I was contacted today about Croatan. And, you know, like fifteen rentals in Croatan, and I'm trying to scratch my head, I don't think we've addressed anything precisely in Croatan. It would probably fall under this, would that fall under the CUP?
Under, under Mr. Jones' version, it would require a CUP. Under Mr. Moss's version, the community would have to come in and ask for an overlay, which would allow it as a permitted use, so, and under the planning commission's version, it would just be allowed. Do I have that right, Kay? I mean, I...
Okay, well, I'm turning it over to you, sir.
We actually need a, almost need a scorecard at this point to keep track, so I will do the best that I can do to summarize, and then we'll stand subject to being corrected by Kay or the individual sponsors. Vice Mayor Jones' alternative acknowledges the General Assembly's requirement that these be a permitted use in Sandbridge. It makes, it makes the short-term rental activity another use that is permitted within the existing North End overlay district. It also makes the short-term rental use a permitted use in the Oceanfront Resort zoning district. It would permit the creation of other short-term rental overlays in districts, in R-5R districts only, and only where a 60% majority of the owners in that R-5R district petitioned this court, sorry, going back in time 10 years, petitioned this body to create that overlay. Home shares are allowed everywhere and all of the different alternatives. In Mr. Jones' alternative, if you weren't in one of the areas I just described, you could still have a short-term rental activity if you got a conditional use permit, but there is no grandfathering. The regulations that have been discussed generally would be contained in the zoning Most of the regulations that were, came out of the planning commission would still be the same conditions, except that, help me, Kay, what are the ones that were different there?
Contact.
The contact, yes. The planning commission took out the requirement to have a contact person available within 30 minutes. All of your alternatives put that back in. And then, Mr. Jones' version increases the insurance requirement from $1 million to $2 million.
No, $500,000.
I'm sorry, from $1 million, from $500,000 to $1 million. All of the new alternatives add a specific sound regulation to say, no outdoor amplified sound between 10:00 PM and 10:00 AM. And I think that that is the predominant...
What about parking? We did something with onsite required.
Well, in Mr. Jones' version, it was still the one, an approved plan that includes one parking space per bedroom.
I thought we went to onsite parking required instead of one per bedroom.
Mr. Jones?
I thought we agreed to onsite versus one car per bedroom.
I think we did.
Yeah, he just agreed with me on that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, would you please say that again?
Mr. Jones and I were of the belief that we agreed to onsite parking versus one car per bedroom.
Let me now go to the changes that you proposed, that are in the ones that says, Mayor Sessom's, to what I just said.
Oh, no, it's Mayor Sessom's and Mayor Jones'. Mayor Sessom's is not that bold.
Mayor Sessom's is the same, Mayor Sessom's is the same as Mr. Jones', except for the things that you just mentioned, and that is, the parking, it would still be an approved plan with a parking, with a parking space per bedroom in single-family, but with two per dwelling in multi-family, which I believe is consistent with what is already required, just for the residential use. In other words, it would be the same as the residential use. The signs, four square feet, and it provides for a second private trash collection on Saturdays, and the two contracts for multi-family, the one contract for single. I believe that's the predominant changes in your version.
Okay, that was in total agreement with the vice mayor, seriously.
Okay, okay, so, so basically, we're just dealing then with that second one, and I didn't need to go through the first one, and apologize for that.
No problem.
Mr. Moss's alternatives, same for Sandbridge, same for the R-5R North End overlay, same for permitted in the OR districts. Mr. Moss's version would allow the creation of a short-term rental overlay in any community within the city, but the community could not be defined and created so as just to enable the 60%. In other words, not going to allow...
You'd have to make the subdivision as it's defined in the planning, like Pembroke or Ergon, or they have to be, represent the subdivision as a flat.
Who makes that decision under your proposal?
What?
Who makes that decision under your...
The 60%? The idea is used, like, the people just like SSD, the neighborhood would sign these affidavits, and these take 60% of the folks that live in that community to say that that's what they want, like we do with dredging, the same idea. The same as in your proposal, it's just instead of conditional use permits in R-10, which your thing would permit, this would say, no conditional use permit, you'd have to have an overlay.
Okay, Barbara, then Bobby.
Do any of these resolutions require that this 60% be permanent residents of that area, or just homeowners, so that someone who lives in another state could, you know, be among that 60%, or they have to be residents?
Well, that's, that's a distinction I think is going to be hard to make, behind what's...
I think it's going to be property owner. I would defer to the attorney, but I don't think we can say...
If it's going to be that loose, I would hope it would be maybe 70%, because you need a supermajority, and it needs to be people who are going to be living there, not investors who have moved somewhere else.
Lunchable, I'd just pick 60 to match, but it could be maybe...
Something to put on table. Bobby, and then Jim Wood.
Yeah, I just had a phone call, I apologize for being delayed, a phone call from, you know, a former constituent who now lives out in Ocean Lakes, and she wanted me to convey that, she said a letter was sent, or something to the effect where their homeowners association really doesn't mind, or, you know, is in favor of short-term rentals, and they feel that certain neighborhoods throughout the city are going to be minimally impacted, you know, by that. So, you know, the point being, though, there are some neighborhoods, maybe Bay Lake Pines and obviously Sandbridge and stuff, they're going to be major impacted, but, you know, they want to point out that a majority of the neighborhoods, you know, are, will have minimal impact, and they would like the ability to, you know, generate other income, you know, without some draconian restrictions placed on.
But is that from home sharing, or is that from short-term rentals?
Short-term rentals.
Okay, well, they'd have that opportunity with 60%, correct, John and Louis?
But I think what he's referring to, and I just, is that people really want to get back to have every neighborhood with planning commission, is a buy-right use to do short-term rentals. That's what I took from that.
Yeah, and the other thing is too, they feel that with proper code enforcement and enforcement of current regulations, you know, should take care of a lot of the problems, and I was asked to convey that.
Okay, Jim Wood, then John.
Well, first off, Mark, if you went in mind, can you put together a matrix like you did with the planning commission recommendations that at least show these two, and then any others that might, might come forward? Because I think that's, that's helpful for us. And I guess I was confused. I thought Shore Drive was included in the buy-right or what-have-you portion of this, because frankly, and at least the part of Shore Drive I represent, I've heard nothing but people who want to be able to continue to do this, as opposed to being opposed to it. So, I want to make sure that that's included in here, so it doesn't have to go through the CUP, or 60% or whatever ends up, whatever ends up going on that. The other thing that I'm struggling with is the, for every, every person I hear that wants one per seven days, I hear one or two that say they want two per seven days. And it's, it's only in certain areas. It's not everywhere, so I don't know, I'm still struggling with that one.
I would just tell you, the takeaway, and again, there's certain decision-making time, but the takeaway that I guess I heard the most from, and I'm going to use the term condos, but that's not how we're addressing it. We're addressing it as, what again?
Multi-family.
Single-family versus multi-family.
Multi-family.
Structures.
You know...
So, is a duplex a multi-family?
Yes.
No, duplex is a single-family definition.
There you go, Ben.
What?
Multi-family is defined as three or more living units.
Okay, everyone's really trying here, but...
I really, I really think you should do it like attached and detached.
Well, you know, we tried that, we brought that up, if you recall. I mean, you educated me, frankly.
But that's how we say in real estate terms, attached and detached.
Yes, John.
One of the things I'm still struggling, Mr. Mayor, and maybe the city attorney can add some light to it, but I mean, you know, all these rules and regulations are great, it just comes down to the enforceability of them.
Correct.
And so, I mean, that's what we had talked about before, and I think that, I think we're heading in the right direction in terms of crafting what those rules and regulations should be, but without the hammer to actually enforce them, I really don't know where we're at. And so, and obviously, there's probably some nuances between, you know, the different options here. I mean, obviously, a conditional use permit, I would assume that if they were, if you violated the term of the condition, you could actually revoke the CUP. But the other stuff, where we're doing it by right, I'm a little confused as to, what do we do if somebody disregards the rules that have been established as a part of that use?
It is a cumbersome and difficult enforcement process, as any zoning enforcement is. I mean, you have to issue a notice of violation, give an opportunity to cure, the whole nine yards. We're talking zoning here. That's, that's, that same process that would apply to any other zoning problem or issue applies to this too. And I understand that's not a satisfactory answer, but it's...
What I think, I think that as we're having those discussions, we need to recognize, and the public needs to recognize, that if there are problems that are associated with this, even though we've set the rules, that we don't have the tools in the toolbox right now to create any relief that's going to be thought of by most people as being acceptable. And so, if I can just finish my statement there, you know, we might want to consider, if there is a legislative ask to Richmond, that would give us something that would be, you know, shorter term in terms of being able to enforce it, that may be something, even if we make a decision to do something now, but to look at it in the future. Because if you do have someone who's a problem, you know, to tell the neighbor, yeah, we're there, we recognize it, but, you know, best-case scenario, we're going to be able to do something meaningful in another year and a half, is not going to be satisfactory to somebody.
Here, John, and then Barbara.
If we do the ordinance for the regulations versus the zoning code itself, I know, I'm just out west, and this has been a big issue about these Airbnbs out there and enforcement of rules, so they've just gone to make the violations financially very penalizing, such that people have a high motivation to comply, because the fines, I don't know if we have the ability, you've got to be careful how you do that, but that has been their approach, is just to have really heavy fines for ordinance violations. You park on the street, you didn't have the permit to be on the street, you probably saw some of that, $1,000 fine. You know, you have noise after a certain hour, $1,000 fine. I mean, these are the things that, and they find the owners too, who then transfer to the property, to the renter, but because they don't want to carry all these people, have all these inspectors and some of these processes, they use the financial, I'm saying this the right answer for us? I'm just saying, I was out there and saw in the paper, as other people are dealing with this, they've gone to fines as a way to make enforcement self-executing, because no one wants to deal with those penalties. Don't I say it's the right answer for us?
Should be on the table.
It is communities that looked at it, and we may, as a Dillon Rule State, might not even be able to do that, but someone's going to be bearing the cost of enforcement. If we're hiring more people, shouldn't that be the people that have the Airbnbs, do some kind of payment, they cover the cost of doing the enforcement, because they are generating the requirement? Just a thought. I mean, we have, but that gets back to, no matter, even if it's shorter, it's still got to be done, it's still got to be cited, it's still got to be followed through, it's still got to go to the courts. There's a cost to doing that, and I don't think everyone should have to bear that cost if they're not generating the revenue.
Barbara.
Well, I think the condition that the owner or the owner's agent has to be identified, and the telephone number given, and they be able to be present on the site within 30 minutes, is our intent that there's going to be some way to be able to call in a concern and get some immediate attention. And I think we, you know, the 3-1-1 is supposed to be that, that vehicle that we now have staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week, but we have to somehow, do we somehow need to make that a part of a policy, that this is going to be the enforcement mechanism, or the mechanism for people to report issues that they find to be problematic, or how are we dealing with that?
We get a call, we look on a list, if there's a point of contact listed, we notify them. If there is someone responds to the phone call, we notify them of the address and the infraction that was reported. We also log in who the complaint is. We keep that as a, as a form of reference of why we initiated the call, and hopefully that person responds. If we get a call back in 10 or 15 minutes, because it's continuing, we tell them, we've got a hold of a point of contact, and they are, have advised, they're en route. If we get a call back 45 minutes later, apparently it hasn't been resolved, we immediately dispatch nine, we throw it to 911 on the same floor, and a police officer responds.
Okay.
If, if there's no, ma'am, just to continue the whole format, if we look on the list, we don't have a point of contact, we just, we flip it across the fence, the wall right there, and say dispatch 911 to this complaint.
But I think when we thought we were doing the three strikes and you're out kind of thing, that this would be an opportunity to, to activate that, but since that's gone, what happens if we have record that there, what's the next step? Okay, that's a particular...
The next step, the next step would be, once we've established a pattern of violation of the zoning ordinance, we would get to the point where my office, in consultation with the planning department, would seek an injunction enjoining the, the repeated unlawful activity, and then that injunction would be enforceable through the contempt power of the court.
But we're not defining what's going to trigger that action. It's going to be something that, it depends.
Well, we, we started to define it with, you know, consistent with what 15.2982, passed down by the General Assembly, gave us. That's the only blueprint that, that we've gotten. I'm open to other, I'm open to other solutions, but...
Well, I guess the enforcement doesn't have to be in the zoning ordinance. The enforcement is what, a part of our policy, or...
Well, the hope was that, as Mr. Hanson said, and I think the mayor has said in previous discussions on this topic, that we hope that by creating just simply the registry with the 91, with the 3-1-1 call-out, that that substantially reduces the number of complaints and the number of issues, and it provides a mechanism whereby the property owner or the property owner's agent has, has a hand in getting their tenants to comply with the requirements of the code. Will there be situations where they don't? Yes, and in that case, you know, getting compliance will not be easy, but, you know, I've, I've heard the discussion back and forth from time to time. We do have all these other laws on the books. We do, but those actually don't necessarily bring the kind of relief that neighborhoods need either. For example, you can have a short-term rental that has all of their guests lawfully parked along the street, but because all of the on-street parking is now taken by that property, even though no law's been broken, it's unacceptable to the property. You can have, you can be in a residential neighborhood with your house 15 feet from your neighbor's house, or whatever the minimum setback is, and there's noise that's not going to violate the noise ordinance, but that's going to be too loud for the infant in the, in the bedroom across that 15 feet. So, you know, we started off with the home sharing versus the short-term rental concept, frankly, because we, we as staff felt like, if you are living in the neighborhood, and you are invested in the neighborhood, and you know your neighbors, you're not going to push the limits, because you have to live there, and you have to face your neighbor across the hedge. Where you just own it as an investment property, you don't have that same concern, and the law just can't make, always make, good neighbors. I, I wish I had a better answer for you, but, but that's, I don't, and that's why.
Bobby.
Yeah, I think Mark highlights, this is an extremely complicated one for a lot of reasons. You know, a couple points that we've got to really take into consideration, you know, we're a property right state, and people have a right to make income, if it's possible, by being a good neighbor. But by the same token, you know, a lot of the things that we're talking about apply to our permanent and long-term rentals and ownership, where they have a bad neighbor that, you know, does things. I have a gentleman in my district, the next-door neighbor has a truck parked right in front of his driveway for the last four months. You know, the police went out, checked it out, it's legally parked, but it's a nuisance to this individual. But, you know, statutorily, it's rough to do something about it. But the point is, though, how many people in this city, their permanent next-door neighbors are nuisance from one way or the other? Whether it be dog barking, whether it be parties, nightlife, you know, in certain neighborhoods where drug activity and crime is up there, you know, this is a generic problem that we have throughout the city, you know, outside of short-term rentals. So, the point is, though, I just think, you know, as we weigh and try to be fair, you know, a lot of folks are, you know, dependent on this income to make livings, to help pay the bills, and I see that more and more in my work.
Jessica.
I agree a lot with what Bobby's saying. On, in the terms of these two resolutions, and if it's already been mentioned, I apologize, do either of these permit grandfathering of the existing short-term rentals? So, I have a lot of concerns about that. I think whatever we decide to do at the end of it, it needs to include grandfathering.
But at the same time, there are a lot of areas in these resolutions that are autumn, that are not impacted by that.
Right, and I understand that, but there are... And I understand that, but there are, there are short-term rentals all over the city, and for those people to have complied, and for us to know that they exist, and then to come and say, by the way, you've been doing business in your home for X period of time, you're, you're shut down, I think that's extremely unfair, especially after we made them comply. So I, I think grandfathering the existing ones is very important. I also don't think we're gonna see a huge uptick in people trying to become, you know, running these businesses in their houses, especially in districts like Bobby and ours, who, you know, the people that are staying in Kempsville in a short-term rental are probably there on business, they're not tourists, they're just there because they didn't wanna run a hotel room at the oceanfront at the prices. So I, I really believe we need to include grandfathering in whatever we do.
Okay. Barbara?
Just one more thing. The Ag Advisory Commission did talk about this, and has concerns because, you know, of the conflicts with so many agricultural practices, just simply with neighbors, and so they, they did weigh in on it, certainly not wanting it by right, but at least to have a conditional use permit. But there's still that issue that I've been bringing up, and it's interesting that, I got this email just before I left, and this is actually from someone who was commenting on the North End, but the way it's worded is exactly what I've been thinking about. Our zoning codes limit the size of a home only in relation to the area of the lot, with nothing in the code to prevent someone who has enough land from building a multi-bedroom event house. And that's a, a big concern that I've expressed several times in regard to the agricultural area, where all the lots are big and would allow so many bedrooms. Is, is there no way that we can address the number of bedrooms that a single-family residence could have? Or how do we try to get a handle on, on some type of limit? Because, and, and this person was referring to someone buying a couple of lots and putting them together, and then being able to build a oversized house which would become an event house. Because I really think this could be, you know, a result, and it only takes one in a neighborhood to totally upset things. And I, I appreciate the fact that folks, you know, try to make a few extra dollars here and there, but we do recognize that, you know, commercial uses are not basically what we do in residences. And, you know, we value our, our neighborhoods, and, and having them be safe and stable, and people look for a good neighborhood when they're buying their house. And, you know, if a neighborhood has a reputation of being not a great place to live, then those houses aren't gonna sell. So I think we really have to make sure we are, we're looking at our, our neighborhoods, throughout all of this, but this particular issue in the, in the rural area, where lots are all acre, two acres, five acres, 10 acres, you can build a whopping big house. And there's no control, I guess, as long as somebody checks that little box that it's a single-family residence. So I, is there no way we can address that?
Question, other comments, can you, can you address that?
Number of bedrooms?
I, I, I don't, I don't have an answer to that, I'm looking at Barry and Kay to see if they have one. I know this issue, question's been asked before. You know, that, that, that gets us into the issue of, of what, you know, how these are, how these are classified for purposes of the, this, the building code. And that's an issue that, you know, is still, still unresolved on the state level, and I, I really don't know how it's going to be resolved.
Mark, can I follow up? I know we can't prescribe, without saying that even we should do what I'm suggesting, just trying to clarify, we can't prescribe, because what legally is defined as a bedroom, that gets to be a whole other issue, so stay away from that. But I do know some communities have put a limit on the, the maximum square footage of a residential thing, given zoning category, there's a maximum square footage of the structure itself can be, and communities have done that in the state of Virginia, so, I know that has happened, so.
In Virginia?
Mm-hmm. So I'm just curious about, I mean, I know that's happened, that's, that's a given, so maybe there's a different, because what's a bedroom, you know, if you're in Europe, it's closets, you don't have a closet, you don't wanna be taxed. So, you know, but, but different things, but, you know, I, I just think that gets hard how you count it, and so I don't wanna get there, but, but I think that would require a different route through planning and everything else to make an adjustment to how we're redefining future lot development, to get, but it wouldn't do anything about the existing legacy footprint that we have.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I think we look at things as they exist now, and in, you know, most neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods, if, if someone is just converting their existing house, then you've got one thing, you've probably got a three or four-bedroom house. But when we start seeing this becoming an investment, and, you know, we are seeing that in places, then people buy something, tear it down, maybe buy two lots, put them together, then the next thing you've got is a really big structure, which is not in conformance with the rest of the community. And, you know, I think, you know, since we have seen it happen, we have to understand that it could happen anyplace, and is there a way to, to deal with that?
Well, there's the house down in Corolla with 24 bedrooms.
Wow. Yeah, oh, I know, I was thinking, when you said that, I thought croodan, I was in a Corolla. Yes, I know, they can get very big.
24 bedrooms.
And, you know, that's, that's really not a single-family residence.
24 friends.
Well, and it's not one building, it's like three buildings.
Yeah.
All right, other questions or comments? Very good. Yes, sir?
I, I am recommending that, as a path forward for the council, and of course, it's council's decision to make, and I acknowledge that, but my recommended path forward, because these alternatives are all starting to get somewhat further away from the three alternatives that were presented to the Planning Commission for its consideration, that perhaps what council should shoot for is coming to a decision as to a recommended ordinance on June 5th, that at that time then could be referred back to the Planning Commission, again, properly noticed pursuant to the Virginia Code, and then brought back for final approval. You know, I, from a timing perspective, you know, we're starting, we're getting ready to start the summer months anyway, a number of people have pointed out that people already have contracts through the summer. If you're going to adopt an ordinance that would curtail the, the, the short-term rental activity in places that have been doing it, and in places that have contracts, it might make more sense to at least not start that until later in the year anyway. So I, I would just toss that out for the council's consideration.
Yep. If, based on his recommendation, I don't think we have any other choice to be candid with you, based on that, so I would recommend we do that. I acknowledge at the same time, the public wants to see some action, which I think we've heard, but at the same time, we add it the right way. I got Rosemary, then Jim.
So, thinking out loud sometimes, it's a dangerous thing, but our mayor does it occasionally. I still have a little bit of a problem with the people who are already doing it, that they're not gonna be grandfathered in, and then they're gonna have to go through the expense of going through the process. Is there any way that if we don't grandfather them in, that they get some kind of financial credit, so, you know, so they don't have to bear the full burden of the financial part of getting the CIP? Just a, you know, just a thought. If there's any way we can do that, I don't know.
Jim Wood?
I, I just have a problem with sending it back to the Planning Commission again, because people are looking for action on this, and it's been a long time, and.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest then that.
If that's something we have to talk about in closed session, then we need to.
Closed session, yeah, we'll have to talk about it in closed session.
I just, I don't like that.
Well, isn't this pretty close to Alternative 1? It's the overlay districts. So this was proposed in Altern, as Alternative 1, I think.
We'll, we'll talk about it in closed session. Okay, any other comments? Very good conversation, I think we're, we're getting there.
Really?
Hey, of the opti, well, we're not sitting around trying not to do anything, we're trying to do something.
Everything is definitely tentative at this point.
All right, and to the city attorney and his staff, and to the planning and staff, we thank y'all for all your hard work there. Before I get into the city manager's briefing, obviously, there'll be talk through the resource management plan. I happened to walk in here last week, and Mrs. Henley was just concluding a meeting with your agricultural group.
Advisory committee.
Agriculture advisory group, and she has something that, and everyone was smiling, so my timing was good. So, anyway, she has something to share with you.
Right, I would just like to submit this, so that it can be a part of our, our budget consideration for the reconciliation workshop regarding the original proposal to, to pretty much terminate the ag reserve program and use Point 7 counsel that Henry to go to Stormwater. And of course, there was quite a purring of support for the agricultural reserve program, which was, I was extremely glad to see, and a lot of concern about terminating it and discussion, and, and so the Ag Advisory Commission did consider this at their meeting on Monday night of last week, and then came back on Friday to consider another aspect of it, and we feel that this is a good way to deal with this, which allows the ag reserve program to continue, and also provide some of the funding that would be needed for a stormwater, particularly in the southern part of the city. So in, in the interim there, the Budget Office had created four possible scenarios, and you have that in a, your handout here, which would show you what we were looking at, and the scenario that was called Scenario 2 seemed to be a, a good way to deal with this issue. It maintains the current practice of enrolling or average 300 acres annually, and so the office determined how much money had to be in that cumulative balance, and had to be available in order to bring 300 acres annually into the program. It would provide a one-time reallocation of a million and a half dollars from the cumulative balance for Asheville Park Phase 1, and then annually after that, $990,000 annually for the Southern Canal lead ditch CIP project, which is the only CIP project that is available for the rural area. And I think this would allow some meaningful money to be able to do some stormwater programs in the southern area, in the rural area. This scenario should be sustainable through fiscal years 2044 to 2045. So I think for anybody's duration here on the City Council, it ought to, to handle it. So with this as a, a proposal, I would like to see this carried forward to the reconciliation workshop, and I think we feel that this is a, a good way to keep the ARP for the area, which we feel is also a, a stormwater help, and also deal with these other issues, so that's the proposal.
Great compromise, great work. Thank you. All right, Alice Goodall with the Commonwealth's Attorney. Just calling around.
Yes, I have reports, he's in the back room.
Good job, Bob. She did good work on that one. Call, we're glad to have you.
Thank you very much, glad to be here. I don't intend to go through the presentation, I know you all have gotten it in advance.
Correct.
And had an opportunity to go through it. The bottom line is, from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, there is a, a very small increase between the, the two different budgets. The increase, the reason for the increase is it's the next phase of the body camera implementation of staff for my office. So that, that accounts for, for the increase in the two.
Any questions of Colin? We thank you for coming over, sir.
All right, thank you all very much, thank you for your commitment to my office.
Thank you. Counsel, while we wait for the next one, that Netflix thing will be passed out, it's all of Fosse and Sis to read, and at the time we do the agenda, you can tell me if we go on, on the, add on or not, but it's up to y'all. And again, if you'd read it before we do the agenda, please. Okay, let's go to the clerk of the Circuit Court, is Tina here? Hey, Tina?
I am.
How are you?
Good.
Good.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Counsel, Mr. Hanson. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to come again before you today, and I'm honored always to serve as the Circuit Court Clerk for this amazing city, and my staff and I are always here to serve the public. The Circuit Court Clerk's Office has many duties, we are the keeper of the vital documents recorded in our locality, deeds, deeds of trust, plats, powers of attorney, judgments, notary applications, business names. We record the most vital record for our military, the DD 214, and we provide that service at no cost to these folks that defend our freedom, I'm very proud of that, kind of. We are also responsible for probating wills and estates, handling guardianships for minors and incapacitated adults. We assist eight judges with daily dockets that consist of name changes, divorce, adoption, larger-sized civil disputes, and the very complex criminal matters. Not to mention, all of the appeals from the district courts come our way. And I, I might add, on the criminal dockets, they get more difficult each year, as new legislation every year makes for an abundance of moving parts with a criminal matter, dealing with someone's life and liberty. A lot of things to make sure those all happen correctly and efficiently as we possibly can. And I'll tell you that we handle all of those duties, over 800, as stated in the Code of Virginia, with the most wonderful employees this city could, couldn't be more proud of in assisting the citizens of Virginia Beach. My budget's pretty cut and dry, it hasn't changed much over the years. I just always like to come before you to remind you of all the things that we do do with the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, and what we handle. And it brings me to one piece of what we do, that we do marriage licenses, and it's kind of a fun place, you know, a lot of the things that, that people come to for the Circuit Court, they're not happy things, divorce, sometimes that's happy, you see people celebrating that. Adoptions are definitely a very happy occasion to come to the clerk's office, but marriage licenses, that's just really a fun place that we see a lot of happiness. And so we have taken upon ourselves, Judge Croce and I had a, a brainchild, and, and this has been over a year ago, that we would house a marriage commissioner. There are four marriage commissioners in the city of Virginia Beach, and they all perform civil ceremonies for the public. And we decided to come up with a space to house a marriage commissioner every week. So every week in the month, a marriage commissioner comes, and so they can not only get their marriage license in our office, they walk across the hallway and they get married. And so we finally made that room, it's not just a very cold, gray-walled, white-walled room, it's, we've had some fun decorating, and we've heard nothing but great things from the public. And I just kinda wanted to show it off, and I'm guessing, that's kinda the outside of the office, and we've kinda made it a, a little bit pretty. For those that can't afford, or, or just don't want a great big wedding, it's kind of, it just shows, we've, we've decorated it with lights and some flowers, and just kinda makes it warm, and we've heard from a lot of the, the parents, how they had no idea that it was that warm to get married in the, in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office. So, anyway, that's just kinda been a fun thing that we've done this, in this last, these last few months. So just as always, I am very thankful to my counsel, my city manager, my mayor, for always being willing to listen to me. I hope I don't whine a whole lot, I don't think I do. And we are grateful for your support for our office and what we do for the public, and I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Jim Wood.
I just have one question, because I see the sheriff there, does he let people bring cameras in to take pictures?
No, sir. We do provide that, we actually have a camera in the office, that we provide a few pictures for the, the clients that come in, because.
We're wanting to get married.
No, we can't do that.
Do you have your Elvis costume?
I do.
All right, any other questions or comments? Tina, thanks for everything you do, and pass on a thank you to everyone that works with you.
All right, thanks, thank you very much.
Ken, you're up, how are you?
Yeah, you got it.
Glad to have you.
How y'all doing?
Good.
I would like to, to yield any money that they, they're not using to me, and so, and we don't have a marriage room, but we have a number of cells that they can utilize. I'm, I'm not gonna go into everything that we submitted to you, I, I don't do that, I don't think y'all need, because there's a couple of points I'd like to make. I, I hear all the time that the sheriff's office is a state office, we're a constitutional office, and I hear that the, the city's not responsible for the funding, and you all have stepped up and provided funding for the salaries of the deputies, and you have a vote later tonight that I'm appreciative of, of you considering, but we've done a study at the jail, and 76% of our efforts are city-related, and 24% of our efforts are state-related, and so when, when you. And so when you realize that the state pays about 45% of our budget, I mean, it's still a good deal for the city. And I think that, you know, that you're getting your bang for your buck now. I think that, I did a number of things, I'd like to go into today, but I think the things I'd like to cover are that you have an idea of what we house in our jail. Today we have 52 murderers in our jail, we have about 198 sex offenders in our jail, and then we have people all the way down to people that have not paid child support. And so we have quite a variety in our jail. The state has the ability to have six different levels of prisons, and we only have one level. And so we have to house all the murderers and the non-payment of child support in all the same facility, and so it's quite an ordeal, it's quite a task. We have about 450 mentally ill people in our jail, and it costs about $82 a day to run the jail, and $82 per inmate per day to run the jail. And so you can see how quickly that adds up. And the state gives us $4 for city inmates and $12 for state inmates, and you all pay the rest. And we make about $6 million in the operation of the jail, it all sets the taxpayers' costs for running the jail. But I wanted to point out that anything that we do with the mentally ill, I think we lead the state with the treatment of the mentally ill, is a result of what you all have funded and enabled us to do, because the state doesn't give the city money to do that. And I want to thank you for helping us with the mentally ill, and ask for your consideration tonight on the resolution that's coming before you, and we haven't responded to any questions that you all have.
Any questions for Ken? I would just say, Ken, it infuriates me that we basically have a mental health hospital over there, it infuriates me. I mean, something's going to have to change.
Well, you know, we had some great meetings with the community service boards.
I know you have, everyone's working together.
At the city level, I think everybody is working together. We're making some great strides, but, you know, the bad thing is that the mentally ill over there still have about a 95% recidivism rate within three years. It's like a death sentence to those people, and it shouldn't be that way. And a lot of them don't need to be there, and we can, if we get, we have a program now with the courts to get some of these people out on court programs, and we have a program that Dinet Smith and us are working on together. And I think if we get that, we'll lead the nation in deferring these people out of the mentally ill, out of the jails, because it's just not a good environment for them, it's not a good environment for us either.
Well, we appreciate that effort, we really do.
Well, thank you very much.
Have a great one.
All right.
Okay, Emergency Communications and Citizen Services, Stephen Williams.
Yes, sir, thanks, everybody.
Good.
So really quick, ours is short and sweet, we're not really asking for too much extra. We did some reorganization in our budget just to line up better where we were actually spending the money and that sort of thing. On the next slide, it talks a little bit about, I want to give you just a quick update on our training update, our training program. Last time we came, we only had a couple of months' data, but we've been able to pull it out from 2016 out of here. We're really seeing positive results with it, and we've been making some tweaks and changes along the way to help get them trained quicker with the same standard and skills that we expect, but also retaining them. So we are seeing some gains with that. We've got a couple more, we got a class that's starting May the 10th, then we'll have one late summer, early fall, again, to help us with the position, so we are making some ground there. The next slide just talks about a couple of things. There's going to be some adjustments to the 911 wireless funding that impacts us from a state level. You pay a fee on your wireless bill, and they spread that out throughout the number of PSAPs, 911 centers throughout the state. We're going to be hit probably about half a million dollars that we're going to lose every year from that based on the new formula. And the last part really is just that we got a couple of CIT requests out there for the CRM system, which is what 311 will utilize to help track city issues and that sort of thing. And then also, there's a CIP for a generator for our backup training facility that happens to be in the EMS admin building. So that's the two major things that we've got going on in this year's budget. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, looks like you really get some things moving faster and more efficient out there, basically to those numbers.
Yes, sir, that's what we're trying to do, and keep our standards up, because that's important.
Got to do that, but we thank you. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir, Jim, I'm sorry.
So what is, what's your retention like right now?
So we're still right about 45, 50%, which, before we started this, we were around 25%. What we see from talking across a national average is about 50%. Some places do it a little better, some places do it a little worse. You know, we've been, we're getting ready to start training our new folks that are currently in the academy a little bit different, once they hit the floor on the job training, just by using some best practices and research and stuff that we found to see if that helps out. But we've made an improvement, still not where we're going to be at. I don't know that we'll ever be at 100%, you know, honestly, I just don't. You know, when I look at, not just in our industry, but industries out there, people just aren't staying in jobs long enough. I mean, we really, what I think's beneficial for our department is if we can get somebody to stay between three to five years, that's a win for us. And that's really kind of what we're focused on right now.
Other questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We will now move on to Emergency Medical Services, Ed Brazel. We welcome you, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. We'll start out with our obligatory, how the money's divided up. We don't have any significant changes, we're always tweaking things across divisional lines, our two biggest line item increases, the position we'll talk about, and a 2% escalation lifeguard contract. You'll see us again in the coming months talking about the future of that arrangement as well. So, we've been here before, I've talked about our membership trends, we feel like we've addressed the decline, starting to see an uptick. We've put in place all the infrastructure you gave us last year with the training, with the extra instructors, our new training center, and we've got a lot of new equipment going in there. The members are happy, cost of service is still low, and the community support is still strong. Going back to that dollar-for-dollar, when you talk about the in-kind services the volunteers bring, and the direct dollars they and the foundation spend, it's about a dollar-for-dollar for what you put in, they put in a dollar. So it's a great return on the investment. Obviously, our challenges, and we want to address this year, we got the complexity of volunteer scheduling, calls, calls, calls are not going away. And meanwhile, the state is, in terms of grant money and some training money, it's starting to decline. We put some things in place, and not raising the alarm, but we're watching it closely. So the position that we've got in our proposal, an officer that's managed really two challenges that we're lumping together. We've got a safety program, EMS, we're kind of catching up to the fire service and police as far as a dedicated focus on occupational health, safety, and wellness. This person will also be bringing in our desperate, or disparate, rather, no pun intended, our disparate efforts at scheduling and trying to find better ways to be more flexible in the duty reductions and things we've talked about before on the volunteers. So that's what this officer's going to be dedicated towards, and that's our biggest issue for the next year. So with that.
Jim Wood.
One of the things I noticed wasn't in here was the community paramedicine. I'm not going to ask about Pulse Point, because every time I do, I know, Steve starts getting shaky when I ask that. So, community paramedicine, that was something that was kind of hot, and then I see its requests have been not funded. What's the total amount of that, and is there a method whereby you could somehow combine that with this new person?
The total project was three people, about $300,000 with everything to it. The heart of it's a manager, about a third of that cost, a manager to get the program up and running and coordinate with the existing resources. We looked to try to put it on this person, it just was too much responsibility with the scope of what we've seen around the country to try to build it. I think the manager, and that's phones and computers and things, about 105,000 plus or minus.
I'll give you my perception of that, that to me is for someone that served and can't want to run the four duties a week. And we've got to stop doing the four duties a week. I mean, I haven't been, seen anyone, young and old, saying to me, please pull back, that requirement is killing us. And I mean, I don't know if you hear that as much as I do, but it's hugely on my mind. But it seems like this thing, that, you know, that Jim's brought up, we'd have volunteers who'd be ready to jump all over that, and the time would not be as tough. And then the bottom line is, I think it will reduce the number of calls that are coming out if these people are being, if this program should work. I mean, is that your thought process?
Yeah, I think that what I've read about that is, the people that they constantly go see, the frequent flyers, the people that don't take their meds, that basically use ER as their primary care doc, if the folks there can reach out to them and help. If you read about how they've done it up in Northern Virginia, Maryland, and places like that, you know, they go in and they establish a rapport with some of these folks, and it's not just, you know, let me take your vitals, it's also, did you eat today? You know, and has anybody come and helped you or anything like that? It's a simple, it seems simple, I mean, nothing is, nothing is simple.
I agree, you're right.
But I think from my perspective, for $105,000 in this budget, I think that's something that we need to, we need to take a look at inserting there, and then with the challenge to use, you know, light-duty people or volunteers.
Well, we do, they have administrative people already in these, that maybe would fit it.
There's a role for the administrative and for the volunteers on that point of service to the client or patient, if you will. We've traveled around the country, and it's really, it's establishing the program, the managing, the initial screening, and then building the linkages with human services and the hospitals and things that are, that's a continual.
There's got to be a good buy-in with human services and the hospitals, because it's going to reduce the hospitals' costs, and human services is going to, you know, they're not going to have to deal with these folks as often.
And we've had some great meetings with them, talking about some mental health issues and things, so it's that continuity of the program manager, and then there's all kinds of tentacles for who can actually go out and do the point of service.
For those who are working on the reconciliation.
I just wrote it down. Okay. Very, any other questions or comments? Thanks for what you all are doing every day, I appreciate it so much. All right, Fire Department, Dave Hutchison.
Hello, sir. Hello, everyone. We've got the Brain Trust of the Fire Department here, more specifically Ms. Brandt in the middle there, she's the one that keeps us straight, especially when we're concerned with the budget, so we thank her for being here. All right, Vance, you ready?
So, we're going to start right out with the significant issues for us, and obviously, health and safety is of the utmost importance for us, and y'all are going to provide us a new person, we'll cover in a few minutes about physical fitness and nutrition and stuff, we'll go into that in just a minute. One of the biggest things for us is the cancer prevention. In the last year, we've been able to buy another 100 sets of the second set of turnout gear, which gets us out of the carcinogens a lot quicker, and as you can see from the picture, we're teaching the guys and gals to do the gross decon on the scene. We've bought a second hood, and we're getting ready, Jack, I believe we're going to be at 250 sets of turnout gear, second sets of turnout gear, which is really important after the fires, we're getting out of the gear that has got the carcinogens in it, they're going to get into new gear, and then we'll wash that set of gear while it's, while we're still on duty. So instead of having to wear it for the rest of the shift, so that's huge. Mental health is another very, very high priority for us, probably right there with the cancer, is that this year, for the first time, believe it or not, we've had more deaths in the country from suicide with firefighters than we've had from every other type of firefighter death. So it was over 100 this year, that's the first time that's ever happened. So it's kind of a big deal to us. So we've added mental health support throughout the department, we've trained over 25 individuals in specifically in dealing with mental health issues. They're not counselors, they're just trained to see things earlier and help us with that. So that's been on the forefront for us. Next slide, Vance. Obviously, the technology, we just went through with Peter Wallace, just went through the smart city stuff with us at our last SGT team leaders meeting, and it was a wonderful thing to be a part of, and I'm thrilled with looking ahead and the transatlantic cables and everything that's going to bring to us for the fire service to be a part of that, to look at automated systems for lights and such, it's going to be just terrific for us. So we're ready to get on board with that. The drone program, as you see here in the bottom, we had the large mulch fires, as some of you know, in the last couple of months, they used the drone to go up and take pictures of it and show them so that we could develop a plan with the business owner to how to get that back in compliance, and also decrease the danger to the surrounding area and the firefighters. The drone was instrumental in showing that picture to make that happen. So just coming up with the technology, and as obviously with Week 17, we're going to be a part of that as well, so using it. Our call volume is still going up, we're at 46,000 calls now, so they're not decreasing. And as I've said before, although we don't think about it in the city, we have 1.5 fires a day, it just could be everything from an outlet to a small room to, obviously, the large condos burning, but we do still have 1.5 fires in the city a day. So it's quite frequently. Next one, Vance. Current growth, thank you very much for Fort Story. We'll be moving in hopefully next month, the third, fourth, and fifth, right, y'all, is when we'll be moving into that building. We're getting very close now, the recruits graduate at the end of this month, so that'll be fantastic, it's right on time. Burton Station, we had to push back a little bit, waiting on some stuff, some infrastructure, but we're ready, the trucks are being, you know, ready to be ordered, the people, we're running that process, so we'll have that, all that stuff ready for when the Burton Station opens. And then we're renovating the fire training center. Future growth is the two, is Indian River behind us, and then at Landstown, you know, it's the two areas that we would look to in the future as far as where we would think our next strategic growth area would be. That's what we're getting down to, is those last two areas, and that will have finished off pretty much where we think until there's major growth below, yes ma'am, I know that's not going to happen, but, but we have to say where it would be. So that's the magnitude of that. Next slide, Vance. So here's what we're asking you for, the resource management captain, it's been since 1984, since we've added a person down there. The battalion chief has supervised the three civilian staff. Since that time, we've gone from 250 employees to almost 500. So it's well-needed, and we appreciate that. Number two is the public safety, public safety strength and conditioning, it's really an athletic trainer certified. We spend a lot of money, close to $93,000 a year in strains and sprains and injuries. We feel very certain that this person will be able to make their salary back and decrease injuries. We embedded in the recruit school this year, a specialist that has been sent to many classes from us. We have decreased, we've cut in half our number of injuries at the fire training center doing PT and the fire stuff. We believe it's a direct correlation to having that physical, having them there to help keep the injuries down. Next is really, was really a no-brainer, we had a person that was on, that helping at our, for our EMS training, it was an Abacus employee, we're bringing him on part-time with us, it's saving us $3,000 a year. So we're getting the same person for $3,000 less a year, so we thought that was a good idea. And then the last thing on the list is the Fort Story, it's really, you know, as you all know, the FFNE stuff is what's left there, that's the fixtures, the furniture, and any electronics that we find that we need to put in there. And that's about it. Like I said, the conclusion is Fort Story, what we're, appreciate you all doing for us, the asset management software, obviously the CAD, and then the public safety equipment, CIP, that's been a wonderful program to have for us to be able to get our turnout gear and the stuff bought through that program. The ongoing priorities, as you know, we're always, since DCM Covert's been in the seat, we've been asking for four-person staffing, we're going to continue to do that, especially in the areas that we know we need it. Burton Station, the fleet replacement, Reggie, and then our chief, Funiak, does a great job in preparing what we need to keep us in the best equipment. And then we appreciate you all making the public safety pay plan, putting it up on your top priority as well, we appreciate that.
Bruce Murray, Ben Ballmer.
So where are we on the four-person staffing? That's been a really long-term goal.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a goal when I first got on council, so there you go.
Yeah, we've completed all single-piece companies, have four-person staffing minimal. Then we have, any of the new equipment that comes onboard is automatically made for person staffing. So now we're looking at the dual-piece companies. I looked at Ms. Kane a minute ago, because we've spoken, one of the first areas that we would look for would be her engine 16 in the Plaza, because of the flooding and everything else, and it is also the number-one running engine. else, and it is also the number one running engine. I just made some guys angry that are listening, but it's, it's in the range of the top three of the engines that are running, that run any EMS and fire calls. And so that one with the flooding would be our number one. But it's our two-person, our two-company stations that we would look to get the fourth on the engine now, is what we're looking for.
Pretty close.
We're within, yeah, nine, nine companies is what it is. Yep.
Baller.
When you were looking at your future growth, being Indian River and Landstown, would these be in addition to five, or are you keeping five and also having these?
Well, I'm not gonna say I wanna close a station, ma'am. So I would say that it would be working with my partners in EMS and maybe, and making it a dual, a dual station would be what we would be looking for. But I don't know that we would look to close five. It depends, you know, you know how this works. We would look strategically as like, okay, is the best place right here, you know, might be two miles, and then we may become within a mile and a half, and we say, okay, we would shut five and make it the new five. But if it was all the way down to like, say, the other side of the sports complex or something like that, well, then we'd start to get a little further away than where we'd feel comfortable. You know, it starts to get into the dollars of how, what we're protecting and how many calls we run. We'd have to run all those metrics.
Indian River Road's a pretty long road.
Yes, ma'am.
Where you were thinking along Indian River Road?
Back towards the west, going towards West Neck, behind me to the, to the south, downtown, southeast, I guess, you have Kellum High School, going that direction, getting out that way.
John Moss.
As a ROM, of your 24,000 calls, what percentage of those are fire?
46,000 calls.
I think so. The 46,000, what percentage are, are fire?
Forty, forty-some percent. And that's why I'm saying, sir, a lot of times you'll hear people say, you'll hear us say that the fires are going down. That's not really accurate, a way to look at it. A better way of saying it is the EMS calls are just going up so much that we're running more EMS calls, so that percentage gets higher. I know you're a numbers guy. As it gets higher, it decreases the percentage. It doesn't decrease the number of fire calls, and it certainly doesn't decrease the amount of fire we're having in the city of Virginia Beach.
John, can I, that plays right into what Jim Wood just brought up.
Yeah.
And I mean.
It does.
It, okay.
I was out there listening, and when I heard y'all talking about it, that's why I came to the door, 'cause I felt like it was, it included both of us.
We're, we're running into a lot of calls that perhaps don't have to be run.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was, same, same thought process. Of the total number, what was the total number of applicants we receive for the spots we recruited for for our firefighting academies?
That's a great question. Over the years, we're normally above 1,000. Right now, currently, with the economy that's come up so fast and that all seven cities are running a process, I believe when our numbers were eight, right around 800, they were down a little bit. And by the, but by the time we sliced and diced and brought it down, it was still around the same 300 that we deal with to move forward.
Okay. And, and, and how many that actually started the academy versus the number that will just now finish? What's our completion rate?
Typically, our, our, right now, I would say we're in a low, we're always around, just say 33 is a, 33 to 35 is what we start in the academy. We usually finish around 30, 20, 27 to 30. That's a, usually it's four or five. Physical, people realize it's just, they're just not meant to do it. Some mental, like, we have to put them in some pretty tight situations, and they just, like, I'm not gonna be doing this. You know, and then sometimes it becomes academic, but normally it's the first two.
But your execution is within historical norms, if I hear you correctly.
Yes, sir.
Right. Thank you very much.
Other questions or comments? Dave, thank you for coming over, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Thank y'all for everything you do every day.
Thanks, guys.
Jim Severa.
They got the highest level from our public of service.
Firefighters won't give you tickets.
Jim, we're glad to have you, sir.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. We're gonna, um, cut to the chase, go straight to our trends and issues. I'm sure you've already looked at, at our numbers, what are up slightly, but that's only because even with the new positions, the people that we're bringing onboard are at a considerably less pay scale than those who are retiring and walking out the door. One thing I want to talk about is our trains and issue, trends and issues, there's a lot of changes going on in society right now. Society's had some big upheavals, and we are first and foremost involved in a lot of those. You know, we talked earlier about mental illness as, as a condition throughout the entire country. Our officers get involved in, in, in mental ill situations constantly, in which they either have to make an arrest, or we get somebody to the psychiatric assistance that they need. But I just want everyone to know that when police officers are out there hundreds of times a year dealing with somebody who's suffering from a mental crisis, it's not in a closed, sterile environment. It is in the environment outside these four walls where things are changing instantaneously from start to finish, and that officer has to make a lot of instantaneous decisions. A lot of times, that means that our officers, instead of one or two police officers responding to a scene, we will have to send a half a dozen to be able to slow that situation down and not have to use force on an individual who's suffering from a mental crisis. That adds to a lot of changes in our response, in our responsibilities. We just finished the Shamrock Marathon. Once upon a time, the Shamrock Marathon was one day, and it was a traffic operation. It is now two days, one night, and instead of just traffic operation, it's traffic, it's safety, and it's security. We even have to rely on a JTTF to help us on all of our main events that we now have in and around everywhere in the city. You know, on the bottom, we said, stealing from a, an old car commercial, this is not your father's Oldsmobile. Now when we.
JTTF is, they probably.
Joint Terrorism Task Force. So when we, we have to interact on a major event, we go well beyond where we were 10 years ago. Public expectations has increased. I've often said cops do not walk on water. Public wants cops to walk on water. So the expectations have increased, therefore, our training and our education has to increase on our, on our end exponentially to where we were a decade ago. I also have, want you to know, we have, employee expectations have changed. Young folks today wanna have a life outside of, of wearing a blue suit. And we have to make sure that we are also taking care of our officers, not only while they're working, but in an off-duty capacity. Fire chief mentioned the mental illness for us. That's pillar six of 21st century policing, which is officer wellness and safety. And we work very heavily on that. We've had to change a lot of our internal processes in, in light of that. Changes in our city, I was just congratulating Warren Harris. As you know, Mr. Vice Mayor, I always talk about economic development because we are part and parcel of economic development. Two new hotels coming to Town Center, a data processing center coming to Corporate Landing. We're very proud of that. We're also proud of the fact that we're looking at building a sports center. I always wanted to say Fieldhouse. A sports center and, and a new pier. We're looking at all of these things, changes in our city positively. We also look at data sets that, that deal with enhanced social stressors. We have a lot of social stresses going on, not only in our city, but throughout the country. We deal with that. We have to look at that. There's a lot of changes in our city. Finally, I want to say that we are very heavily engaged in the professionalization of policing, not only here, but throughout the country. Former police chief of Berkeley, California, August Volmer, really talked very heavily about police officers should have college degrees. We need to work towards police officers having higher levels of education, and he first advanced that in 1927. So here we are in the year 2018, and we're still talking about cops that should be higher-educated, higher-trained, professionalizing our police agency. We're looking at a number of, of avenues down the road. We're working with the city manager and the deputy city manager to talk about how do we professionalize what we do. Laura? Next, I want to tell you that you have 10 council priorities. We are an integral part of seven of those 10 priorities. We really don't have a whole lot when it comes to improving the transportation system or technology or your infrastructure. But if you look at your other priorities, you can see where public safety takes a step forward in that. And I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that the police department is maybe the integral part of those seven other priorities. You know that we're working very heavily right now with superintendent Spence on creating a safer environment for our schools. We have one of the largest and one of the first school resource officer programs in the state, and we're gonna take that to the next level with the school superintendent. I just want you to know that in our current budget, all of our positions are funded. We're very grateful, very, that, that, we're, we're sticking to the five-year plan, the extra 10 officers have been included in this particular budget. But I do not, you know, know that our revenue projections for Photosafe are down, and that's a good thing, because when we first started the Photosafe program, we said, this is gonna become revenue neutral someday. The object and the intent, believe it or not, is to lose money in Photosafe. That means that our citizens are obeying that red light system. So this is the first year we're beginning to see a drop in our Photosafe revenue. I can talk for the next hour about where these officers are going to be placed. We know that we're gonna, that we're just finishing up the Western Bayside project. We're now beginning to look to, to have a permanent staffing at Town Center. The next group of officers will be dedicated to the Town Center project, with a few of those officers beginning in the first and fourth, fourth precinct for the Holland Road Corridor. After that, we will start working on enhanced presence at, at the oceanfront. Keep going, Laura. We'll just go straight to, I guess, the bottom line, questions.
Questions, Bobby and I.
Yeah. And thank you. And chief, I don't think this council or the people in Virginia Beach can thank you enough for what you do every day, 24/7. Look at fire, you look at EMS, you look at sheriff's office. We got, what makes Virginia Beach really great is people knowing they live in a safe city. And that being said, that I don't think we can any longer take things for granted. We have been talking about addressing compression and fixing salaries since I've been on this council for 14 years. The time is that we can't be talking about this. We gotta get this fixed, and we gotta fix now. We can't take for granted, I don't know how a, a police officer that may be married to a teacher can really afford to live, you know, comfortably in this city sometimes. They're financially stressed. And the amount of stress that you described, that your officers do every day in danger and everything, deserves the compensation and the respect that we, as a city, should be willing to give you. And the point being, though, you know, once again, you know, money is morale sometimes and things of that nature. We have a finance department. We can know we can't take for granted. And the point is, I think it's time to step to the plate and give the recognition that public safety and other essential people in the city need. But, you know, but once again, I think you're part of the infrastructure of this city, and we have to recognize you accordingly. And please convey our thanks to, you know, everything you do every day.
Well, thank you very much, sir. One of the things that, when I talk about changes in society, people are not adverse right now to challenging a police officer to hurting a police officer. Remember, this year, we had an officer stabbed, we had an officer shot multiple times. So yes, the stresses on the street have increased, not only in Virginia Beach, but throughout the country when it comes to interacting with the public.
And can I, just one quick follow-up. You know, in terms of recruiting and retaining police officers, you know, obviously, you know, sometimes you're asking people to, what's the starting salary, around 34 thereabouts?
No, it's about 43.
Forty something? Okay. But still, you know, a college graduate, you know, can make a lot more and not have to work on weekends, not to work on midnight rotations, not to have people pull, put guns and knives on them. You know, you gotta think about, you know, our future and recruiting, and I applaud you for your efforts trying to be more inclusive in your recruiting and everything, but you have to have those incentives that people wanna come into the profession. And I think we gotta give you the tools to do it.
John Moss and then Jim Wood.
Theme I've had, you know, first of all, appreciate all the conversations we've had on the phone and in person. I've always been concerned about the fatigue of the force, and it continues to be a concern. I've went back and looked at your, your daily vacancy rate that you carry for all the reasons that you carry it. I've looked at leave accumulated but not taken by the officers, meaning that they're not taking probably the, the mental health breaks that they need. And I've seen the comp time that's been accumulated but not taken in the same year. So I know there's a lot of hours being put in by dedicated people. That in and of itself is stressful, even under the best of circumstances. So as we, I think I looked at, we have like 23 positions, officers, like, I call them street-level officers that are, that have been vacant more than 90 days.
Yes, sir.
I think there was six, I'll call them leadership positions. There were different things that have been vacant more than 180 days. I, I know you're not gonna be able to answer all the reasons for that here today, but I, I'd like to hear more about that, 'cause I'm, I'm concerned that as we're adding more FTEs to recruit and budget, we're having a difficult time. We end the year not filling the ones that we have. And so would we be better applying our resources to give you more tools in your toolbox to fill the positions that we have authorized before we start budgeting more positions that we end of the year we don't fill? Because that isn't providing the extra people on the streets that people can take the leave, can take their comp time. And so just what's executable, not to add to the day, but I'm concerned, how we can, what's the tools in your toolbox to get the numbers up? I realize our resignations were lower this last year, that's a good number.
Yes.
Versus the past, they're down like 30, which was a good news story. And, but the retirements are still quite high. They look like the average around 40, if my memory serves me right. And I just wanna make sure that we have the right tools to fill all the jobs that we are currently budgeting before we start adding more positions we can't fill. So I really hope that you can come back and tell us, you can't hear, what the tools you need and the strategy so that we can deal with the market conditions to actually fill the jobs we've already budgeted.
Yes, sir. We'd be more than happy to do that. Obviously, I'm gonna be working with the deputy city manager on just, just that idea. And, and one of the things that we've looked at is this idea of the professionalization of police, and I'll be more than happy to continue that conversation.
Right.
Okay, Jim Wood, but before that, but I think you and I agreed on something. Dave Hanson put out some of the best information I've seen in a while on the salaries that, the police and the Fire Department, you know, showing where we're weak, but showing also some improvement in a lot of categories as well.
Well, I think we are to get the build on it. I think when you look at the direct compensation levels, we are the highest in the region on those charts. We were paying the best for the most part, if you looked across that chart. That's what the chart showed. But also, I have to say, our police department delivers results far and above what the police departments of other places go. And one of the things that I've talked with the city manager about, and also I've shared it with the police chief is, is you don't always wanna add money to salary, 'cause you pay that cost forever. What you wanna do is you wanna pay the people more money while they are here, delivering the result that you want. There's lots of ways to do that. There's continuation pay, there's incentive pay, there's contract pay. We do all these things in the military, I'm very familiar, to get people, but you don't, that's not in their base salary, so you're not paying that when they're no longer delivering the service. And it lowers your cost, but you pay for the, for the service that you get when it's being delivered. And you make a differentiation between the, the two, and you do have things like education, all those things pack it. But you are correct, it did say, but we're still facing other issues, and that's why I wanna understand, 'cause on the paperwork we got back, it said resignation, but you don't know why. And, and I know you know why, but if you could share that, why, 'cause all we got was the category of it. But I think understanding, it's a very complex issue, I think. It's not a simple algorithm, it's a chemistry, but I think it takes a lot of little pieces. But that's why I'm asking about, 'cause we keep adding more jobs, but we still end up into the year with 40, 50 positions vacant. The, the additional 10 jobs didn't get filled. So maybe those resources are better applied at retention initiatives rather than just adding more positions. It's just a thought about resource allocation.
Jim Wood.
Thanks. Can you go to slide 12, talk about the overtime?
Yes, sir.
And that, that one bugs me and probably keeps you up at night, too, looking at that, because you've got 951,000 in overtime funds available. You figure you're gonna spend 300 on College Beach Week, and, you know, the budget starts July 1st. And, you know, the budget starts July 1st. And that happens to be right when the July 4th weekend kicks off. And if you've got a sunny summer, a sunny June, you know, that number scares me. It kind of goes back to what we talked about before in terms of recruitment and retention. You know, obviously, the more people, in theory, you can at least nudge the overtime down a little bit because you've got, by my calculation, about $300,000 in there that you can't anticipate, weather events, SWAT callouts, expressive events, because you don't know, you don't know when you have SWAT calls. You don't know when there's going to be a hurricane or a tornado or something like that, or a big blizzard or something. So that concerns me. And then you couple that with the fact that all the baby boomers are retiring right now. And I was just reading an article today, and I forwarded it to Deputy City Manager Coover, talking about the applicant pools and things like that. I mean, the applicant pools now for the police departments are 25% of what they were just a decade or two ago. And so that kind of tells you what it is. And John's exactly right. I mean, if you take a look at the quality of what we get here versus other places, you know, we're very fortunate. I mean, it's clearly crime rates down, very proactive police department, technology is extremely good. And, but it's worrisome because we need to keep feeding the people in. And then when we look at the fact that the academy loses a good number of people.
Yes, they do.
Continuously. And it's, you know, it's cyclical. I don't think it's any particular major issue there. But I think this last one was a fairly high number comparatively.
Yes, it was.
And that's a little bit worrisome, too, because people go through it. And when you talk to the people down there, they'll tell you. You know, we tell them when they come in for the testing. This is a tough job. This is what to expect. We tell them when they come back. And they do, even up to the point where they bring their families in, they tell them.
That's tonight.
Yeah. And as a matter of fact, when you have that recruiting expo in May, and I went to that last year, you told them, you said, this is what, and people still don't stay in. So really, that's kind of an area, I mean, you talk about, you talk about the tools. I mean, like, I think Utah State Police, Salt Lake City, San Jose are all offering cash incentives right now. But then also, there's a chart in there that showed that municipalities are paying significantly more salaries than state agencies.
Yes.
And state agencies are really hurt. And I think you've read about that. And the Virginia State Police are still significantly down. So when you look at this overtime, and you look that the police department has $5 million in overtime budget, that's a lot of money. That's a whole lot of money. And you see that they've executed 4.1 million, and they know they're going to spend another 300,000, you know, before the end of this month. And you still have a couple of months to go. That's...
And we have Memorial Day weekend. That's usually about another 2:25.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you're referring to the article in Governing Magazine?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we've devoured that also. And it's an issue. It's an issue. And again, look at the expectations that society has. I use that term, cops, they want cops to walk on water. Look at the responsibilities that police officers have today as opposed to X number of years ago. And so you add all that together, it is a much different, it is not your father's Oldsmobile. It's a much different profession than where we were, especially when I started, when you and I worked together at the Second Precinct. It's a different world than it was 10 years ago. And so one of the things that we'd like to continue to discussion is this idea of how do you professionalize what we do?
And this program that we talked about the other day, this community, or not community, the career development program that you all have in there, I mean, I think that's something that we really need to take a look at because that does incentivize people to stay and move ahead. And it puts money in their pockets as they work towards some stuff. So I've asked for information on that, and once I get it, I'll share it with the council.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Chief, pass on how proud we are of everyone.
I will get that word out, sir.
And thank them. All right. We'll now move on to...
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, David.
Where's the storm tracker? Aaron Sutton.
Thank you.
Aaron, we're glad to have you.
Hello. Last on the list, I'll be quick. All right. So I just wanted to, this is our second budget cycle. So I came to you after Hurricane Matthew for last year. This year, I come to you after tornado, jet fuel spill, snowstorms. So the climate is not changing. It is, we're still, we've got quite a bit going on. It was a very active year for us. My staff has been quite busy. We've updated the hurricane plan. We're finishing up the continuity of operations plan for the city. Updated all of our sheltering plans, the general sheltering, medically friendly sheltering, which we'll be testing next month, and our pet sheltering, which we are continuing to work on. We have updated the EOC and the policy room itself with new AV, with new technology, which will help tremendously. We've still got two more rooms to go, but this will start us off for the 2018 hurricane season, I think in a much better position. We're looking for, this year, we continue to build our staff and our exercise and training program. So getting some administrative support in the office to help keep the office moving forward, but also funding for our exercise and training program. I've asked for this repeatedly and with the fire department as well because what we run into in doing our exercises and training for the city of Virginia Beach is I end up facilitating all of it. So I don't get to participate, and that becomes a bit of a challenge. The other piece to this, and I will share with you, the city of Virginia Beach exercises more than any other jurisdiction in the Commonwealth. And I'm extremely proud of that because what it has done has led to things like exercising down and off Punggol Ferry for a plane crash that five months later, we were all together and we knew our roles and responsibilities. And we continue to do that. We have a number of exercises lined up through the summer. And my request for $15,000 will help in whether it's bringing in a facilitator or helping to bring in some supplies to support an exercise or training program or bring in a specific speaker. We've kind of band-aided those together in the past, but we've had special events planners from Boston Marathon, from some of the other significant special events that have occurred across the country. We've brought them in to speak to our group. So this gives me a little bit of a room in order to do that. So these were my requests for this year, and that is all I have.
Questions, yes, John?
Aaron, while you're here, do you have any update on the change for FEMA for the recurrent flooding to allow them to be able to contract correctly with the...
So yes, and we had a homeowners meeting on April 9th. We have three houses based on the letter that we got from Region 3 that we are going to step forward and try it with three homes. If it works, we will continue forward with that. We have, the one thing to remain in compliance with federal government procurement is that we have to have a list of contractors and a list of engineers. And then the homeowners can work.
So there's three that are in the queue now to be done?
Yes, yes, from the very first grant. Yep. And then if that works, we'll open it up to the rest.
John Moss.
One of the issues we had after Matthew was people had FEMA insurance, no, flood insurance, was finding FEMA-certified contractors to do repairs. Or what are we doing to increase, or how can we go about increasing the number of contractors that gets certified when we don't have flooded neighborhoods? So that when they are flooded, we have more people able to do the work.
And that's a push at the national level, too. We're working with contractors on a regular basis because of the home elevation program. So we're kind of, same message, hey, we're really trying to work on this home elevation program. These are some of the things that you need to think about as it relates to the FEMA program as well.
But is there anything we could do to more act, is like, I know we hold things for the swim businesses, we hold these workshops. Is there some way to, does FEMA come down and hold local regional workshops or places where people can come out and find out what it takes to qualify? Because you'd think they'd want to be able to be instantly go to work, like there'd be a financial incentive to have your business able to go in, show up at...
And FEMA is, one of the plans, they just put out the new strategic plan, and one of his is to streamline FEMA processes. I don't know how quickly they'll get to that. But one of the things that they're leading, they're going to do is put FEMA representatives from Region 3 in state offices. They've already done this in North Carolina. Virginia's going to be the next one so that we can have more of this outreach, direct outreach. Right now, we have to get on a list and say, hey, we would like FEMA Region 3 to come down and present, whether it's building or public assistance or individual assistance.
I just hope that somewhere, maybe on our webpage, or maybe the chamber, someone ought to be building the regional list of these are the qualified contractors. When Midland Region does their HAREX, which, you know, we do our own hurricane exercises, does the city participate in those exercises?
Yes, so May 7th will be, it will not be a large scale, but we will be participating in the EOC. And the departments will be communicating with them. We'll be kind of reminding them, time to get your plans out, meet with your staff. So yes, we will participate along with all the others.
Now, are you the place that maintains the inventory that's on file with the feds of all the people that have over a certain threshold of chemicals in their industrial buildings?
Yes, that's my responsibility.
And so, and are you the one that does the exercises relative to spills for those areas as well?
Yes, yes.
And are those sites, which are known, which are public information on our websites?
Yes, they are. If you go to my website, the map, my link under emergency management, the local emergency planning committee, which is LEPC, which is what governs that, the map is posted there as well as the oil and hazmat plan.
And do you also know which city buildings, or which buildings in the city, what hurricane standard they are, 5, 4, 3, 2? So we know within the inventory of our community, which buildings are really more than 2, but we need the higher standard of 3 and 4? Do you have that?
There aren't any to have on the list. So... So military, going on to the military bases, different. City buildings themselves. So Kellum High School's a category 2, Old donation, or the new Old Donation Brickle Academy is a category 2. The Field House is a category 2, so...
I only bring this up because you remember during the CIP review, we were building new fire stations, and we're building them to category 2 standards. And we're putting architectural features on those buildings that are just like wings to the wind. And it just doesn't make any sense. It can't do it for everything. But we need to think about when we're building brand-new public safety facilities that we are not, we tell everybody that storms are going to get more intense, that the water's going to get higher, that the winds, but yet we then go and build a building to a legacy standard. It just doesn't. Do you review those buildings by chance and comment on those?
Yes.
That's something we ought to do.
And we responded to your comments, and we've adapted Burton Station's design.
I just want to say, general rule as we look forward, we got to really think about, are we matching up our own or telling residents? But I appreciate, thank you for what you do.
Any other questions or comments? Aaron, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one other budget-related question having to do with the CIP project.
All right.
We had a contingent from the Asheville Park community at our last open mic session. And this Asheville Park project that will be in the CIP that will be needing to adopt shortly. In looking back over this February 26 briefing, it was anticipated that we were going to be modifying the proffers and so forth in April. And I don't think that's going to happen. But in order to know what we're doing with these projects there, and of course, there's Phase 1 and Phase 2, which implies there's going to be another phase sometime in the future. And I think the folks said that they didn't think Phase 1 was going to be enough. So we clearly are causing an expectation that there's going to be more. It really concerns me, but also the fact that it's the master plan of that community that we are going to be committing to, I guess. And we would be committing, you know, some future council to do this other work. And I asked for the transcripts, and I appreciate getting those because trying to get up to speed on that community from the time it was established in '04 until now, the plan keeps changing. And if this drainage plan is based on more and larger BMPs, it seems to me that that's taking up property that's in their open space and in their potential units. And, but they seem to be clinging to this, quote, commitment that they get 499 lots. And I don't know how they're going to get them in there. So I'm really worried about when we adopt the CIP, if we haven't considered this master plan, what we're committing ourselves to. I'm kind of not sure. But how in the world can they build 499 lots if they don't have as much property as they had to begin with because it's being put into BMPs? Plus, they have more wetlands than they had originally known. And I think we probably need some legal counsel on what our commitment is and what our responsibility is, or what we are committed to as far as that 499 lots. For instance, when they built and they completed, I guess, Village B, they said that they have five more lots that they didn't put in Village B, so they want to put them someplace else. Well, you know, if they built Village B, and it's chock so full that that's where they've gotten the most flooding, I don't really feel that we owe them another five lots that they didn't put there. But this 499 lots seems to be the firm thing that the developers feel that they have. But I don't know how that can be provided, really. And then we are also committing to this Phase 2, which we really haven't seen what that's going to involve and what that's going to take up. So I just think there are a lot of questions there to that major project that I don't understand. And I think when we adopt the CIP, if we're adopting it just to say we're going to build Phase 1 and you can expect that we're going to improve the flooding, but the, improve the issues related to flooding, I'm not sure that we are. And I think we need to know what we're committing to, and they need to know what we're committing to.
Dave, you want to respond?
Yes. I happen to have had a conversation with Tom Leahy and Barry over the last day or two. We actually are working through the term sheets with HomeFED. And we intend to place on your first meeting in May a briefing that will not only summarize what, and will provide you a draft copy in the Friday package so you can get your fingers, get your eyes on it, but also provide you a briefing. We'll probably back up and do a historical briefing. I'll get Barry to rehash all the data that he provided this weekend to you. And that explains what actions the planning commission took, where we deferred and didn't do that. We'll also have Tom lay out what the terms of the cost participation agreement is. In the interim, we'll have met with Asheville Park residents and the civic league and provided them a conversation so that they understand in response to their visiting the council and expressing their desire to move forward. So we'll prepare you. We were going to put it on next week. We could do that. But that meeting is scheduled for next Wednesday with the Asheville Park folks. I believe it's next Wednesday or Thursday. Can't remember. I know we also have a budget meeting. So we, you know, we're kind of chicken and egg thing here. We've got to make sure that they're in sync with our plan. Yes, we certainly understand that the open space, some of that open space originally is now consumed by some BMPs. And so that'll be something we'll have to discuss and what those impacts are.
Well, the very fact that, you know, in reading all through all of that, there was never a concern with stormwater, I mean, in any of the approvals or anything. But now that this information has changed, I mean, the circumstances have changed. Are we really bound to that original approval? I mean, when we are finding that there's such a major drainage problem in that area that, you know...
Well, the good thing, Ms. Henley...
It may not be the best thing to do.
Well, the good thing, Ms. Henley, is the investment that the council's made in the actual modeling necessary to have a better level of confidence on what meeting the 10 and the 100-year storm requires. And we've been able to validate, calibrate would be the proper term, our modeling, and we're very comfortable where we're at right now. And we think we've got the right Phase 1 that will be providing some significant relief to the A and B that's been created and make some headway in improving that and providing a elimination of first-floor flooding in those villages with this first phase.
But the problem is, if we're committing to A and B and 35 or 40 million, whatever it's going to take, this is the only project in that area that has any potential flooding money. And I know there are going to be other communities. I keep hearing of one particular that's not too far from there that's going to be a hotspot. There won't be any money for anybody else. You know, are we putting all of our money in one neighborhood? And then that other, I mean, that sub-basin just joining this to the side hasn't been modeled yet, and that has a terrible flooding problem just in thunderstorms. And that modeling, we're not going to have until next year at this time. So, you know, concentrating on one community, and we need to do some major work there, but we also have... But we also have to remember that there are other communities that we've got to have some resources for, too. So anyway, I'm just a little worried that we're overcommitting in one place. And I know, John, you wanted to say something.
Well, to your point, when I was looking at the CIP, I said, you know, and I know, Mr. Hanson, because you got the note from me about it, the description in the book needs to match what we're funding. It doesn't, it should say phase one, and the description should match what phase one is. And that schedule of activities should say phase one schedule of activities, phase two schedule of activities, the funding profile, so that what we get briefed is what we vote on. Because if that's what we agree to, that ought to be the description that's in there. More importantly, the number was 11-something to 13-something, I think, was the, was the range of the dollars. But the amount of money that was in, there's only $12 million. So the funding profile has to match the brief profile, which it doesn't. And the descriptions need to match. And maybe all we need to have in there is phase one because we don't know what phase two is. And maybe we shouldn't be setting an expectation, to your point, about phase two because we don't know what that is. But what are we approving, whatever we're going to fund? The description needs to match on what we vote on.
Right, so we're going to get some information on that, and so look forward to it. We've got to get moving because we've got to stay on track here because we must have at least an hour for closed session. Block two Town Center, Warren Harris. We welcome you, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to defer to Mark Warner, our project development coordinator. This is an item that we're going to bring to you at your next formal meeting, but we thought obviously appropriate to brief you today with regard to Town Center Block Two and the option agreement. So, Mark.
Thank you, Warren. Mark, we're glad to have you, sir.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thought we would quickly review Town Center's history. As you all will recall, this is what Town Center looked like in 1998. We started diligently on work clearing in 2000. And today is what we have is our central, urban core central business district. Just to summarize what we have, we have over 800,000 square feet of office. We have 19 restaurants. We have 223,000 square feet of retail, 756 residential units, 412 hotel rooms, and over 4,350 structured parking spaces. To date, Amada Hoffler has invested almost a half a billion dollars of private money in the project against a public investment of 108 million. Just quickly to review the five phases we've completed and the public and private investment in each phase, and the ratio of public to private dollars is 1 to 4.5. We also track the, all the taxes that the project generates that come back to the city and the general fund and other funds in the city that are not dedicated to the project. And in fiscal year '16, it generated over 8.2 million dollars back to the positive for the city. We currently are wrapping up construction on Phase Six, which is Block Nine. Hopefully, you've been by there recently. It's really taking shape. But Block Nine includes, is a mixed-use block, includes ground floor retail of 33,000 square feet, which will be anchored by William Sonoma and Pottery Barn. The second level will have the Zeiters American Dream Theater, a 300-seat experimental theater, which is totally being privately funded, along with a 5,000-square-foot restaurant, and then a seven-level, 131-unit studio and one-bedroom luxury apartments atop of that. The private investment is estimated at about 38 million. The public investment will be an elevated second-level plaza and a pedestrian bridge connecting to the Cosapolitan parking garage, along with the streetscapes around the block at 3.9 million. Looking forward, you see Block Nine is where we're working today. The only block left in the core area is Block Two, shown on the diagram, the former beacon building site that we demolished and is now a surface parking lot. The option agreement refers to, that we're talking about today refers to Block Two. And then in the future, you'll see Blocks 15, 16, and 17. That's the properties that Amada Hoffler has obtained control over, which includes Barnes &amp; Noble, Ultra, and the Regal Cinemas. And that's for future potential phases of Town Center. Here's our master plan of the core area with Block Two highlighted, which we're talking about today. It's a 1.4-acre site. And Amada Hoffler has proposed to develop another office tower. We just recently leased up the last two floors in the Clark-Nixon Tower, and we're now substantially out of product, of office product in Town Center. And we think that the market will support a development of another tower at this point in time. Here's a rendering of it from the Sandler Plaza. What's being proposed, once again, would be, and being marketed, would be a ground floor retail of about 40,000 square feet with, above that, a parking garage on levels two through six, or five levels of parking. And then above that, a 10-story, 220,000-square-foot office tower. The hope is that, once they could secure an anchor tenant, we could begin work on this and come, and come to terms on a development agreement. But given the success of Town Center, we hope that this will happen very quickly. So the option agreement that we entered into when we started the project on all of the acreage that the development authority took title to and then Amada Hoffler took down as they developed the blocks in different phases is scheduled to expire the end of the month. And they have requested a three-year extension to pursue development opportunities on Block Two. They're currently marketing the site and the, all the terms of the current option agreement, which they pay an option fee, which is equal to what the real estate taxes would be if it was in private ownership. So we would recommend that we would bring forward this to you at your next meeting for extension of the three-year option agreement.
Mr. Jones, Mr. Wood, are you all okay with that recommendation being held liaisons?
Yes.
Oh, one question. Why don't we, since the option's expired, why aren't we going out a public bid and finding out what the free market would pay us for renewed option? Might be greater than what we're getting from them. How do we know what the market value of the option really is?
Well, we know what we have invested in the property, which is significantly more than the market value of the property. Amada Hoffler has invested a half a billion dollars and would like to continue on with this partnership.
Their money is a sunk cost. They got an option, they got the value they paid for. I'm asking a question, the future dollars, because sunk costs in economics, they're, that's, they got what they paid for, they got time. Now it's new time. New time has a value. It might have a greater value than what they're willing currently to pay. I'm asking, how do we know that we're getting the current market value of that option with out, going to the marketplace and asking? And they can bid along with everyone else.
I guess we'll find out on the vote.
We'll talk about it.
I know you mentioned that we're low occupancy, or low availability for office space since the tower. What are our numbers on the apartment rentals? What vacancies do we have there?
Well, they are over 90%. And that's why they're adding 131 luxury apartments with the next phase with Block Nine. But both the Cosmo and the Encore apartments are pretty much full. I mean, it's, they're getting the highest rates in the region. And there's a, at one point, there was a waiting list. But right now, there's about, they're at 90%. But there's a lot of demand for the studio and one bedrooms. So the millennials, the kids, they don't want, you know. We have two- and three-bedroom units in the Cosmo, but they're not in as much demand as the one-bedrooms are.
How are the, the higher-priced condos or townhouses or penthouses, if you will, in the Western? How are they doing?
Yeah, they went through the recession. They got them all sold. And, you know, there's been some turnover, but not that much turnover. So it's really hard to gauge the values because there's been so few sales. It's only 119 units in the Western residential. And I would say, you know, less than a dozen have turned over since the original purchase.
Very good. Any other questions or comments before we move on? Mark, thank you very much. Thank you, Warren. Appreciate you all coming over. Dave, how long does a Sports Center layout going to take? We had it at home, and we've had it for a couple of weeks.
Well, it'll be fairly quick.
Okay, great, because it looks great, cool.
Have a lot of feedback.
It looked great and cool? Okay. Ron, keep it great and cool.
Okay, well, I do have the, the design and development team representation here with Mark Homestead and Rick Hibbit from MEB General Contractors, David Keith with Hanbury Architects, of course, Nancy Hellman, CVB, and Rick Marknick with Public Birds, who's a project manager.
Delighted to have you all here, something we're very excited about.
This report that you received a couple of weeks ago is the, is the conclusion of the first portion of our interim agreement, and that is to make a recommendation for a site. I'm happy to work, walk through it, or I can jump to the conclusion.
Why don't you go to the conclusion, please?
Based on, based on our, our site evaluation, in which, in which you may have seen the report, of course, trying to get the design that we're looking for with courts that have 12 courts plus a track and the L shape, we think that's the most advantageous, provides the most opportunity for our future development on the site, expansion of the convention center, connectivity, pedestrian connections, and gives it its own space to breathe on, while it's on campus. It still gives it a nice setting. We're recommending that Site Two, here. We'll walk through these. Site Two with the courts and L shape is just over 250,000 square feet.
Can you specifically just tell us where that is? Because I'm having trouble making sure I know where it is.
So Site Two, here's the convention center. This is Jefferson Avenue, where the light is on 18th Street. Veterans Memorial here. So this preserves that connection, preserves parking.
It's all senior property?
Yes.
But now, okay, in relations, especially to the Veterans Memorial, would you address that?
That's right here, and it's across the street from Jefferson.
And we're very comfortable that it's not going in any way adversely impact that?
Very comfortable. Yes, ma'am. In fact, we'll, we'll, we'll be doing some, we've been doing some routine maintenance, but we're going to do some enhancement on that as well, parallel to this.
And we added a CIP. You may have seen it in your, in the proposal to begin the refresh in funding to support the cleanup and modernizing and replacing some of the mechanics of the Veterans Memorial.
We'll see it here in this image. We believe it creates a, quite a beacon for Virginia Beach. The estimated number of events right now, the pro forma we're working on, is we currently host 17 events in the convention center, and we believe that more than 60 events can be hosted in this. And we'll probably likely have to turn away events.
Yeah, we'll get them, young lady.
We're working hard on the pro forma.
Any questions of Ron? John, you're recommending this?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? We're very excited about this project. Let's get it going.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The, any city council comments?
Shannon and I met today with the staff on CDC. We'll be meeting with you individually to tell you where we think we are to get some direction so we make sure we're not too far out of alignment and give you what the options are. And then at the appropriate time, we'll have an executive session.
Look forward to getting with you. Other comments, Barbara?
Just a reminder that this Thursday, we have the symposium at the North Landing, Albemarle, Estorine Symposium Network. And this map is so important because when you look at this map of the city of Virginia Beach, all of this area drains to the south. That goes to the southern watershed. This is the southern watershed, goes to the Albemarle. It's all Princeess Anne District in there, but it's also some of other districts, too. And I would really encourage you to come to some part of this day's presentation because what we're trying to do is develop a working relationship with all of these entities to the south that drain to the Albemarle. And we've got some wonderful speakers who'll be talking about the sea level rise issues and so forth. And if your community drains to the south and you're impacted by wind tides, you know that that phenomenon has started for the spring. The roads are flooded where this morning, where yesterday, down in the southern part of the city. So this is really an important issue, and I hope you can get to some part of the, of these presentations.
Very good. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I just wanted, as in the past, just so it won't be heads up, I know you've been probably following some of the questions I've been asking. I will be bringing forth, along with other council members, an alternative budget that does not increase fees and taxes that are in the current manager's recommendation that is executable and I think addresses the priorities more in line with what citizens are expecting.
Thank you, John.
Just real quick, an announcement that there will be a Centerville and Kempsville Town Hall meeting on April 30. Everyone is invited to come. We're going to have a budget presentation update on all the projects in our part of town, and we would welcome you to come.
Other questions or comments? We'll get to the agenda. Does anyone object to this being added on? Okay, I'm going to ask you to put that on as an add-on if you don't mind. 6:30. Baldwin High School. There'll be add-ons in Center, that's all right. They're picking on you, Mr. Jones. You're doing great.
I'm having a moment of silence.
Because we're so quiet.
You've been designated the council scribe.
Do you want to go over the agenda?
Yeah. And we got, we got the add-on. I am told that item number one is, we have speakers. So that will be pulled.
We have speakers on 2A and 2D. 3D.
I'm abstaining on that, one of the Navy thing. At appearance, I'm abstaining on that.
And also, council, what I'm going to do then, I'm, as you know, if there's a public hearing required, I'm going to ask that they make their comments at the public hearing pertaining to the ordinances. Okay? I got it, got it.
2A and B, John.
Yes, all that deals with all Navy thing. I want to avoid any potential.
Those items, 1 and 2A and D.
Oh, yeah, I got it. Yeah, got it, got it.
We're pulling it.
Yep.
And then we also have speaker on item four.
We're going to pull item three also.
Yeah, item three, because we're going to do a little something extra for Harry. I'm going to call on Jim Wood to make that.
If I could make a comment to, I don't know if it's remain, but line 24, his name is misspelled. He texted it? Okay. That's just a test to make sure you're handling. Okay.
Test passed.
So, anybody have any problem with items 5, 6, 7, 8, 9?
But I, but I would like to ask, since we're getting ready to adopt a new budget on the 1st of July, a new CIP, what was the, what was the rush that we just had to do this, Mr. City Manager, between now and July 1st, number seven, and amend the CIP when we're adopting a whole new CIP on the 12th of May? Was there something that's happening between now and 3rd of June?
Yes, in the current, in the current program, we have the need for some slight acquisitions.
All right, we're good.
And we left it out of the CIP description oversight. And how about under planning items? We have speakers on item two. How about item one?
That can be consent.
Right. Okay, Ms. Henley?
Yes.
Item three, Kempsville, Jessica? Okay. Item five, Evergreen?
What's four?
That's Beach District.
Does four have speakers?
Four has speakers.
Four's got speakers, yeah. John?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Item six, Henry Stanley, John?
Fine with that. Would like to disclose it's on the same street that I live on.
And I'll be abstaining on five and six. All right, council. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session. The chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711A, code of Virginia, intended for the following purposes: legal matters, consultation with legal counsel, and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 7 Short Term Rentals: Immigration Issue. Personnel matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews on prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissioners, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees, council appointee evaluations. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Dyer?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Dr. Davenport?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Luke Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Ernst?
Aye.
Of course, Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.